To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have the consent agenda in front of you. In the motion. Motion by Belt, second by Jorgensen to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. First up, we have John Rasmussen, engineer, discussion and our decision to set a public hearing to dispose of title or interest in real estate for August 6, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. to convey Highway 92 new access rights to the Iowa DOT at 407-90, Highway 92, Carson, Iowa, for the Highway 92 Bridge Replacement Project. Isn't it a Highway 59?
Yes.
Bridge replacement?
They're replacing the 59 bridge over 92. It's a low clearance, so really needs done. They're looking for us to give our access rights away along 92. So maybe that's confusion. We're giving up access along 92 for about 300 feet west of the bridge. If you're out there, that's all hill. All of our driveways will be remaining. I guess we're not really changing anything in driveways. We're just saying we won't build a driveway about 300 feet from that bridge, which is about impossible to do anyway.
Will they maintain that then?
Well, there's nothing. The bridge?
No.
I'm sure your question.
That 300-foot west and.
Yeah, they they won't allow us to have a driveway there if we applied for one, but I don't see us applying for one anyway. Our existing drives are plenty adequate. But you have to have a public hearing to dispose of your property interests.
For August 6?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
August 6, the 10:00 a.m.
You will? Do we sell it to them?
No.
But we have to buy it from them?
I don't like so. Okay.
We have a motion by Belt, second by Shay, to set the public hearing to dispose of the interest in the real estate for August 6 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion has carried.
When do they plan on doing this?
A year later.
Okay.
Okay, next up, Doug Reed, discussion on disaster recovery response. You have some updates for us?
Fortunately, we have something going on. Well, with the obvious stuff up front, we saw the Missouri crest crest over the weekend, and it's on its way down, like briefly mentioned in the previous meeting. We've got at least north of the city limits, northwest part of the county, at least two confirmed breaches on some levees up there, several areas of overtopping, some reported culvert damages on the Honey Creek, those kind of things. Council Bluffs has not seen a whole lot of major impacts. They do have on the west end, kind of a little seacoal area that that's probably related to the storm sewer system and the high water in the river and everything that's going on there. As far as your question to I-680 and stuff, really right now, from what they see, they're only seeing some minor damages to the shoulders and things like that. So it looks like that it held up pretty good. So I don't think we're facing a dire straits. We're going to have it closed down for a complete replacement type of job like we saw in I-11.
I didn't know if the highway, the base of the interstate, if it was saturated. I don't know if that was.
It looks good.
After or not.
After the reconstruction, I can't remember if they did this after 11 or if they did it with the repairs in 2019. They did a lot of reinforcement to the base of that system with something G-Wiz that the engineer types do. So it looks like it held up pretty good and it performed as expected. And so they'll have some debris cleanup, some shoulder repairs to make. Now, what kind of timeframes we're looking at with the water going down and and stuff evacuating out is a question directly for DOT because I wouldn't know how to assess.
Supposedly, on the interstate, we're to open up, it'd be open up to normal traffic. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I, we can assume so.
Okay.
But whether it's restricted to one lane for a while, or this, that, or the other, just something they're going to have to determine after they can access everything and do a full assessment of their systems, right? So nothing tangible on that yet, but at least it's trending towards looking good, that it's not going to be down for a long, long time. Obviously, last night through Thursday and through Thursday this week, we've got some more severe thunderstorms, more more of a concern of the heavy rain potential with everything going on than anything else. So as of so far before coming over here, there's been no real reports of any problems out in the county as far as flash flooding or anything like that, just the expected areas in Council Bluffs and some of the low areas with some urban street flooding, those kind of issues. Council Bluffs, with the river levels going down, has been able to open up some of their outlets. So that's kind of helping, dealing with with getting rid of some of the rainwater that we're expecting. But we certainly don't need a heavy dump in a short amount of time when that goes. So they'll continue to work on that stuff. Outside of that, we're still working previous events while we get ready to do it all again for the Missouri River. So the April 26 event, which would be the first round tornadoes that we had, just kind of as a recap and where we're at, we have been approved for federal individual assistance. So people are signing up for FEMA and all that good stuff. Our public assistance request on that one is still pending. It's in DC still. As I understand it, last word we got is it should be, hopefully we should get word on that, and that word hopefully will be approval and competent in meaning that way. But that should come this week or next week. But that's also what we've been told for the last three and a half weeks. So we'll, we'll see when that comes in. But the, you know, around the May 21 timeframe, which was some more severe weather, I think one small tornado, but a lot more flash flooding that impacted some stuff in the county and in our levee drainage districts. We do not have any damages reported to request individual assistance through the Stafford Act. We did make a public assistance request and provided local damage assessment data on that. That has been approved. So that one will go forward for potential FEMA reimbursement on those costs for everybody in the public sector. The latest event, Missouri River flooding, it'd be a little bit yet before we can get started on local damage assessments, just because we've got to wait for the water to go down and wait for it to be okay, to be traveling around and looking at different things. We have been included in the request that will go up to FEMA for both public assistance and individual assistance on that, on that. So again, with those processes getting started, all going to be approved in relatively the same timeframe. At the end of the day, that means that we're going to be continuing to try and coordinate assistance for individuals, businesses, and homeowners under two separate federal declarations potentially, and then at least three different public assistance processes for all of our jurisdictions and departments. So needless to say, that there is a potential to get things crossed and confused very quickly. So we wanted to do the best we can upfront in keeping everything straight, because even one project crossing an incident period and getting added to the wrong request is just going to delay every request that particular jurisdiction or department has. So we've been working together as state and local emergency management agencies to try and find some tools and best ways to kind of keep this up. You know, a lot of counties are just dealing with maybe one or a little bit from a couple where we've got about three, four different incident periods that we're going to be dealing with at the same time. So this is going to be different. And just upfront, your department heads, everybody's department heads are going to get weary real fast and get frustrated pretty quickly because it's going to be a lot, right? So to make it easier in the long term, we're going to ask a lot from them as far as detailed stuff, right? It's just the only way to do it. If we, if we put the work in a little more on the front end, it's going to save us all time and money on the back end. So hopefully, we will get through the next couple of days, kind of winding out these different disaster periods, finding out based on information we already have or what we haven't done yet with the most recent things and say, here's what we got going on. Are you in or are you out, right? And I would hope that if we have a department in any jurisdiction that's like, well, we got this, but it's really not that much, so I'm not going to mess with it, that they're at least routing that decision through the appropriate channels, because I'm just going to take their word for authorized decision, kind of a deal. But I think that we've at least got some things in motion that will help out, keep it consistent and and have things that can be tracked on a larger scale that the auditor's office, all of you as board members, will have visualization on anytime you want to look at it, kind of a deal, right from your laptop or your device. So we're working on making that a possibility so everybody is in the know. We can address things that could potentially, you know, fall into a little gap, because, you know, working three or four FEMA processes at once, that's certainly a possibility that we just need to be wary of. Yes?
Old Lincoln Interstate.
Yep.
And if you go out there, it's like the interstate.
Yep. It always is.
Is there any chance of getting any FEMA money for help with that?
Well, we've, we've seen it. We've seen it happen before, and we've seen it denied before. So.
John?
Roll the roulette wheel and, you know, red or black. That'd be my best.
Yes, we've failed numerous times now already.
Yeah.
L-34 is the same. It's just semi after semi up there as well.
I know. It's just like crazy, the amount of traffic and semi trucks. I was telling some of these people up here about Minster Springs, that beloved corner that's real sharp. There's two semis passing each other on that yesterday, and I was thinking, this ain't right. They're big commercial trucks and probably carrying 80,000 pounds, but we ain't set up for that, are we? That road is not going to hold up very long.
Hopefully, we get the interstates back quick, I guess.
They're what?
Hopefully, we get the interstates back quick.
That's, that's going to be.
Well, I'm looking for us to get some help with some roads, is what I'm trying to do.
Well.
Good luck.
Yep. We can always go to the good college tribe, but, you know, who knows? Ethan Tommy Boy graduated after six years, so we'll see what happens. So anyway, we hope to have some tools and guidance out to department heads, just a little, hey, you know, who's who in the zoo. We will need to get requests for public assistance filed for the second disaster period for everybody that's in, to make sure things don't get confused or somebody says, well, we already did that once. It's got to happen every time. So what we will do is we'll get the information from individual departments and jurisdictions. We will file the required FEMA paperwork upfront to make sure everybody's in by the deadlines for the correct incident period in scope of what that they're looking at doing. And then from there, we'll get FEMA people assigned to different jurisdictions and departments, as well as some state folks. I've already got a state guy in my office today, and actually he's going up to Minden to work on a couple of things right now. So that's, that's how we'll look at that. Hopefully, that stuff will be ready by the end of this week, and we'll start addressing some local damage assessments on the Missouri flooding and things like that come next week. Start working on some things. We're going to try and get rolled out this week an ongoing community needs assessment, particularly keying in on April 26, the events. But, you know, it can carry over into the next incident period as well, although we don't have a IA for that. It might be something that we can recycle and use as we move into the Missouri River flooding recovery if need be. But that will be what we spoke with, with the governor's office last week, for those that were out at that meeting. GIS has helped us a lot with getting that survey ready and done, and it's been tested. It's ready to go. So now we just need to get West Central Community Action on board to be able to start taking some phone calls for people who need assistance to fill it out. We'll have it publicly available electronically for self-service deal, and then I'll work with trying to organize a couple of teams as we move forward to go out and do some door-to-door outreach to help people do the surveys as well. And that'll be a county-wide deal, so anybody impacted from any location will be able to identify what they're starting to see their gaps are and what the long-term issues are going to be, you know, months down the road, and also give us an opportunity just to catch anything that might have fallen as far as some immediate needs that they still might have, anything from having insurance issues to having trouble getting copies of birth certificates that, you know, blew into two counties away or something like that. So hopefully, that, that will be ready to go and will roll out sometime this week. We hope to do it maybe a little bit sooner, but with the Missouri River, you know, flooding and that kind of taking a lot of the media, we're going to make sure that calms down a little bit first so the public information push would be visible and not buried with everything that's going on. On continuing recovery, last week, we had FEMA's Mobile Disaster Recovery Center back down at the Lake County Campus in Council Bluffs over the weekend and opening up yesterday. They moved back to Minden, and they will be there through July 6. Small Business Administration's Business Recovery Center is still operating out of the fire station in Minden for the foreseeable future. And today at lunchtime, we've got another Agricultural Recovery Center that opens up in the Oakwood Community Center. They'll run from about noon till 8:00 p.m. today. So, yeah.
How's the response to those? Is there still a lot of response, or is it?
I haven't got the data even on the first one that we had.
Okay.
But again, like mentioned before, just with everything going on, I don't necessarily know if the, the, the public really knew that that was going on. It was the first one that they've done. They've been operating in different counties in the state now. So hopefully with this one, there's been a little more heads up. They've done a better job pushing that information out to, you know, media outlets and radio stations and different things. So we'll see what it is. But after the first one, it was worth trying to convince them to come back for at least the second one in this county. You know, we put it out east this time because this one isn't just tied to the very first tornado event. It's kind of in and continuing through all this stuff for the farmers. And it also gives us a good access point for, you know, like Shelby County Mills, Montgomery, Cass, some of the other folks have been impacted too. So that's kind of what we got going on.
Doug, one question. Do you guys know how many people were evacuated out of the I-29 corridor there?
Yes, initially. I have that sheet setting on the table in the EOC. So we know out of about the 55, 56 addressed parcels up in that area that may be right around. And again, I'm, I'm estimating my numbers, but I'm within onesies, twosies here. We've got about probably 35 that have actual people staying there, because we had, you know, some, some that showed up that don't even have a house on them. We have some that have houses on them that nobody lives at, and then, you know, we've got some occupied structures. And I think out of about that 35-ish number, we had just about half that indicated that they would be evacuating. There was another, another piece of them that said were staying. And then there was probably somewhere around 10 that we didn't make direct face-to-face or, or contact with, so we weren't quite sure. But when we talked about the voluntary evacuation, we'd sent some deputies up into the area, would still access everything. And we know after, you know, when it was, when the water was coming up, we know of, you know, one or a couple that decided, okay, now it's time to go. So they did, but it's kind of hard to track, you know. Okay, now we're going to go. Oh, it's not that bad, so we're going to come back in, and you don't know it, right? But we've had no, no emergency calls for service with anything related to the flood up in that area. Roads have been, you know, secondary roads have done a great job controlling access up there. And we've had deputies up there kind of controlling and keeping an eye on things too. So.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
So Doug, after the rain event last night, are you monitoring the levels on the Nishna Batna?
Yep. Yep, we are. There's no, there's no set forecast right now. Wouldn't anticipating that we'd really see probably any impacts after tonight, but if we get, you know, some more severe weather and stuff that dumps, right? It's about where it falls, you know, and, and how much they get there. So really, we're kind of targeting up north into like Shelby County and things like that to, to really hit those. So we'll keep an eye on those just like we do normally. But right now, they don't have a forecast out, but I kind of, I'd imagine that might potentially change depending on how they would find the forecast. I know staff was on call with the weather service about, well, 10 o'clock when I came over here, and there's another one with Des Moines weather, I think, on something like that today. So we're going to be tracking that and digging into it a little, a little deeper today as we come into the next couple of days. It's going to be a cumulative effect with that river for sure. But so if we get the heavier end of what they think could come today, plus, you know, another big round of heavy kind of sitting on top of the rains Thursday, it would probably be the one that would start triggering something for Friday, the weekend, kind of a deal, you know, just prognosticate here. But certainly keep an eye on it for sure.
Hopefully, hamburgers ready.
Lot of them down there. Yep, for sure.
Well, thank you very much for your update. Thank you for your diligence.
On other news, because we have so much going, and we do stuff, we've started to tackle some low-hanging fruit off of our things that are showing up on our, you know, kind of after-action improvement items. I know it's been a while, but if you remember back when the board approved the county's rebranding and all that kind of good stuff and everything, all that stuff was authorized at the time and created for our office as well, if we wanted to jump on board with that. And after discussion with the commission, the timing is probably right, because some of the information coordination challenges we've seen with the different, you know, media outlets and public, things like that. And so you'll, you'll probably start seeing some familiar colors on our stuff moving forward. And we'd already been working with IT and GIS. One of the communications things that we see a lot is trying to share all this information, especially, you know, when folks have something to share from us from the county side and everything else, with us being in a separate license under 365, the county being under something else, it's just an access nightmare, and it's, it's just not working. And, and clearly, when we have not just one major event, like we saw with the original, you know, three tornadoes on April 26 in different areas of the county, then you start adding more bigger events on top of it at the same time, we certainly can't keep up with web management and, you know, external affairs like we can off, you know, if there's such thing as a routine disaster. But that's just the way it is. And so there's a lot of good things going when it comes to that with coordination and collective members. So we just need to refine some mechanisms of how we do it, just to streamline it and make it a little bit more. So, so we'll be, you know, transitioning a lot of stuff over to the county, the new county website. When that rolls out, kind of a deal, that'll give us a lot.
Actually, that's a good, good.
Well, it gives us, it gives us access to some automated notifications as well, to different departments and, you know, just everything that can be taken that we don't have access to right now.
Have you figured when the Locust invasion's coming?
Well, like I said, I'm banking on the August volcano, drive things out from the floods.
That'll cap our year off just right.
It, it just about has to wait until right before harvest, right?
Right, yeah.
The most convenient time. So, so anyway, questions?
Yeah, one real quick. When you talk about some collaboration with the, with the county, is there any cost incurred on that?
Not for the county.
So you answered my second question.
Which was?
Oh, you got room in your budget for it?
Yep, absolutely.
All right, awesome.
Absolutely. Now, really, I kind of went over that a little bit with the commission too. But yeah, this stuff is, is not that big of a deal. The website, you know, we've always had some presence on there, and they're just, we've given access to, sorry, what's the, the name of the company?
Eagle.
That's right. I always think ice cream, but I can't remember which flavor. So.
Three flavors.
Yeah. They, we gave them administrative access to our existing website already, and they've started the transition process with everything. We had those discussions a long, long time ago. They've just kind of been picking away at it. So we'll be good to go there. It's just part of the project. As far as the 365 licensing and transferring our license over to the county system, we've, we've offered to IT that when that happens, that, you know, whatever proration of the license would be for us, because we've already got a budget and just let us know that, maintain that. So that's, that's not that big of a deal. And frankly, the, you know, the branding side of the house, I've got two newer employees that we've never purchased any new clothing for or anything like that, markings on the bill, most minimal anyway. So that'll be an easy fix. And so, yeah, every, everything we need cost-wise can be absorbed in the budget without, without complaining to anybody for an extra penny. Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
We had a presentation by ICAP, Megan Hurst and Casey Kayler at our auditor summer school regarding disasters, and the insurance industry is really concerned about the state of Iowa. The Tony and Garfield probably aware of this. The tornado alley has moved further east and just whatever, you know.
Depending on who you talk to, right?
Yeah.
Just, I, if tornado alley has moved, right, it's something for, you know, the scientific community.
They're just, they're a bit more.
Yeah, we're still going to have tornadoes.
Yeah.
If, if, if they draw the line east of Iowa from now on, it's apparently Mother Nature hasn't been given a copy of it.
I think so. We're dealing with more and more.
So, yeah, but no, that concern's out there. I think, I think it's probably framed better that Iowa's probably more concerned about the insurance companies way around. We've seen it in California, right, with the wildfires. Insurance companies are pulling out because of increased fires, those kind of things. We see it down in Florida, both states, right? Again, and it's, it's going to be the buzz, you know, because right now, you know, they're, they're anticipating a pretty active hurricane season. They got a, a bigger one coming in right now. So, you know, which, which again, has an impact on those things nationwide, but, but also impacts the stuff that we're getting ready to go down the road to as far as recovery, because you want to talk about stretching, federal partners like FEMA thin, have a busy hurricane season on top of what Iowa's already seen. And, you know, they're stretched, which means the only way they can surge is to hire people, which means that where the people that don't have experience going to go. So even more reason to make sure that we're all communicating together internally to address issues and ask questions before we reach out up the chain, because we don't know what, what we're going to have sitting in front of us right now. So diligence is going to be the key to get through this for sure.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to head out to Oakland and see how the ag place is prepared.
Thank you, Doug.
Get 20 minutes on a vehicle to myself.
Thank you, Doug.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Jana Lim, Human Resources Director, discussion and/or decision on approval of job description modification for finance and budget director position. And in your.
Same that we discussed last week, the changes.
In your, same that we discussed last week, the changes were made, such as adding the section about the grants in, so it's just finalizing today.
You be temporary clerk to first, I guess?
Yes.
You want a motion to that? I'll move, I'll move that.
I'll second that.
Who, sorry, who's the motion by?
Your friend, Shay.
Approved the job description modification. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Thanks, Jana. You're welcome. All right, next committee appointments. I attended the WIDA meeting last week and working on bylaws, updating those, 712 initiative. I went to that board meeting and we're working on updating those bylaws as well with merger with the C V Chamber, SWIPCO. And I have a letter to, that I received yesterday from our county assessor, Penny Rablin, announcing her retirement with the final day being September 30, 2024. There's a copy of the letter, and there is a formal process that goes into place for replacing her. And she and I are going to sit down next week and kind of map out that timeline, and she's got history that we can build upon, and we will move forward with replacing the assessor.
There is a board that does that.
Exactly.
Not us.
Right.
We don't have any, we don't have any control or say-so on it.
Well, yeah, don't we have one spot?
Yes.
Well, the, there's a committee that goes through the selection process, they they put a person in front of the board for approval, but we don't, we don't do any interviews or anything like that.
Really?
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought we were one of the, all the taxing entities who had one to say on that, I wasn't here when they put her in.
What, a third, a third, a third, it's marriage.
Right, that's what I thought.
That there's a very rigid process and it will be followed to get that replacement.
It has to be posted, probably.
All right, Brian, any updates?
I went to an E M A meeting. I also went to the Triangle of Death train deal for Council Bluffs. Listen to that, that was, do you know about?